At these levels, I suspect that those numbers will come out that we're just gonna do a nice standard, simple system. But I would still like to see those numbers explored from the energy perspective.
The, I mean, you're absolutely correct. The water quality we have is a standard brackish water design like many, many people have done in the state. Sometimes where, and this gets back to the mayor's question about deep injection wells, sometimes when we're in an area where disposal is limited, we might do a variation of what you're talking about, and that is, we might remove divaluent ions up front so that we can get that RO system up to a much higher recovery, to maybe 90 percent in areas where we're concentrate limited. Here, we have adequate disposal. We should be able to use brackish water membranes that are low fouling and low energy. So I think we're, you know, with a standard design, gonna be able to take advantage of the best technology that's available at the present time.
Sorry Nancy, I didn't get that.
That's serious.
And I'm not to believe it.
You're accusing Suri now.
Since I've been looking at this, and because of the expertise that I had in it, I have a little bit different perspective than everybody else here. And I have been on record in the past, and I'll say it now, that your company has not done a cookie cutter study like I've seen other engineering companies do for previous clients that I've had in industry. And I applaud you for that. And now that we're getting to the end, I still want to ask the question, even though I'm on your side of that podium right now, I'm 90 percent sure that it's gonna be nice standard, not anything particularly, but I'll just use as an example, I did a project for Broward County at the Trashed Energy Plant for an ultrafiltration membrane system, and they got one from Siemens and one from GE that was literally $600,000 apart. And the plant manager hired me to make apples, because they weren't apples and apples. It was a different membrane used by GE than Siemens in this particular case. It was the pulsing one. And it came down to was pay me now or pay me later, okay? Because the pulsing one was gonna last a lot longer, have a lot, you know, we don't have to go into, but it, there was value in the extra, there was real long-term value in the extra expenditure. So I wouldn't want us to, because we bid it, and we get a bid that's $300,000 lower, but it may have a different, there might be somebody that bid something a little bit different in technology that would have a 25 or 30 percent reduction in energy costs because of some membrane that came down or configuration. I'd want us to be in a position to at least consider that at that point. And that's just really where I want to go. Again, I applaud you, you've done great work here, and I hope the other wells come in like this, because I think we're in pretty good shape then.
And once again, I would just, I would just, to maybe, just comment upon that very briefly, we specify the membrane manufacturers that are allowed to bid, but we don't specify the actual membranes that are gonna be loaded in the skids. That is up to the OEM, and they need to pick the best combination, as you said, to produce the right water quality, lowest energy, and lowest cost to provide the project. So we do constrain it, but it's, but it's not constrained to the point where there's no flexibility for them.
And that's what I'm asking you to do, because there's also the bid it to get it and then worry about the details later from the supplier end of it, you know, not from, so I just don't want us to go down that road. And again, I applaud you. And I'm enthusiastic about this first well, and I hope the other well's coming very close to it without any surprises, and I think that this is gonna be a wonderful project for our city. I just want to make another point, is if you watch the news in the paper, when this project is done, we'll be one of the few communities in Florida that will not have a water shortage problem, quite the opposite, and it offers great economic opportunities to expand our tax base to try to attract other industries when we get this project done, I think, so that we can get that tax burden a little bit more on the commercial and business side. So it's very exciting. Again, thank you very much. I applaud the work you've done for us.
I make a motion for approval.
We have a motion, a second to approve, all in favor.
Do you have something to say?
I don't know. Half of what was just said.
Don't feel bad, I don't either.
We're just all nodding our heads.
Go for it.
I'm sorry, who was the second on the motion?
We could ask Siri about that.
She was even confused. Recommendation from city officers, Howard.
Yes, I have three, three things. On the bird cut through update, again, our engineer consultant, Hans Wilson Associates, they've submitted for permitting. They're going through the agencies now, Department of Environmental Protection, they're getting comments back, and so that process is well underway. It's going to take a while, because they're gonna have to address all types of different questions from all the various agencies. So it's going on. Our finance director is still in contact with our assessment methodology attorney, so we hopefully will be bringing that back to you for a discussion of what the methodology they are proposing in the next couple of months, we hope. And then we can discuss the methodology. But the methodology is way ahead of the permitting process, so there will be no assessment this calendar year. It's just not gonna happen. So, and we said that over and time and time again. As far as the investigation process that's underway.
Wait, can I chime in on the bird pass before you go?
Oh yeah.
The one thing that, when I read his report, they, what I don't like, it's almost skewed to the negative, where they ask for letters of objection, but they don't ask for any letters like for the project, to support the project, so then all that's in the report are people that, you know, object to it, and why they don't want it, instead of having letters in there of people that do support it and do want it. And I just disagree with that.
You mean DEP?
Yeah, DEP. Like, they only, they only accept the negative letters. They're not, you know, they don't really focus on the positive aspects either, but I guess that's just their process. It's just a little disheartening.
We follow the process.
Yeah. I mean, Hans did a good job of having all the positive attributes in his portion of the report, but it's a pretty interesting report. So, anyway.
We're well underway.
I'm objecting to the letters of objection.
The investigation process, let's give you a little update. Again, we still do not have any information from the state attorney or FDLE, so nothing to share there. The hearing for Officer Cole is today, then the HR manager and our labor attorney will decide what they wanna recommend. And that'll take a little time. That's not gonna happen in one day, but they're not gonna take a long time. And then, as soon as we get the information from the state attorney and FDLE, we will immediately start our internal, the team is ready to go. It's in place, and the city manager reserves the right to add other members of the, to the team as appropriate, depending on what, how it goes. So we're ready to get started immediately after we get the information. But again, as of today, we still don't have it. On March 6th, which is Monday, it'll be in our weekly report, we're having the community budget conversation to develop next year's budget. It'll be at the Lashley Park Community Room, 6:30. We will, we've already sent it out to all the various neighborhood groups, but again, we'll put it in the weekly report. Anybody who wants to come? This is a, we did three of them last year, and to remind everybody, we as staff do not present anything. We are here to listen, and to listen to what people want to see in the budget, how they may wanna see the budget gets balanced, what kind of services, revenues, whatever is on your mind. We're not here to present anything, we're here to listen. So that'll be March 6th, Monday night, 6:30, at the Lashley Park Community Room. That's what we got.
You've been so quiet, I'm afraid to ask.
You should be afraid to ask. A couple, a couple of things. Late yesterday afternoon, I received a copy of a motion for extension of time to file a response to the court's order to show cause in the Fishville case. And that motion was filed by the attorneys for Fishville, who intervened in our proceeding. And as an exhibit to that motion, there was an email between the intervenors, Fishville's attorney, and the attorney for the petitioners, that suggested that among the reasons for requesting the extension was that the attorney for Fishville is anticipating a letter outlining a possible settlement proposal. Now, I had not been aware of any ongoing discussions regarding settlement, other than there was a point in time when the attorney for Fishville indicated that there was a suggestion that that might be coming forth. That's along that way of saying that we have, as a city, the obligation to file our response pursuant to the court order by this coming Monday. I'm more than likely going to file a similar motion as the intervenors did, to extend the time for us to file our brief. It was like about a month's or so delay, which, which the petitioners agreed to for the intervenors, to allow for settlement negotiations. And I think that's reasonable. I mean, most of, much of my work has already been done for the brief that I need to file. In fact, I was gonna try to file it on, by Friday, so I didn't have to worry about it over the weekend. Part of me is saying, go ahead and file it, because it may show the strength of our case, which may help in negotiations. Part of me says, if you got time, take it and see how things shake out in the meantime. So I will keep you informed by email as to what my ultimate decision is on that, and whether or not the other side is even going to agree to my request for extension, the same way as they agreed to Fishville's request for extension. The other thing is a little bit more troubling, and I'm really hoping that I'm not opening up a can of worms, and I don't think I am, but I, I'm concerned. And this has to do with the resolution that the city adopted during its consent agenda this morning, having to do with authorizing the city manager to apply for a grant on behalf of CHNEP. The city took over responsibility as the local host agency for CHNEP in 2014, and as part of that, there was an agreement that the city attorney could be used as necessary by CHNEP to provide legal advice. I think in the two years that, or two years that we have been the host agency, I really don't recall being called upon to provide any, any legal advice. There may have been one minor occasion. But ironically, earlier this week, I was asked by CHNEP to look into a matter on their behalf, which caused me to start looking at some of the documents that I don't think I've looked at since 2014. And, and this morning, I, I got the city's paralegal to bring down a couple of documents that I asked for, and just going through those very quickly, I have concern about the accuracy of the fourth whereas clause in the resolution. And that's, that's the whereas clause that says, this grant requires a 100 percent match, which will be provided by the CHNEP and South Florida Water Management District, and does not require any contribution, monetary, in-kind, or otherwise, from the city of Puntagorda. And I'm just going to assume that that whereas clause, as well as the memo that was attached to the resolution that says, match is provided by CHNEP partners, no city funds will be required. I'm hoping that's correct, but I don't have a full level of confidence that it, that it is correct, without looking at all of the documents that are involved relating to this matter. And so what I would ask is that although you approve the resolution, and I'm not suggesting that you do a motion to disapprove it at this time, but ask that you direct the city manager to hold off signing the grant application until I've had a chance to take a look at the documents that I'm sure I don't have, that might answer my concerns. And I'm certain that I could get that done in a fairly quick fashion. So I would just ask that you do that in abundance of caution, because there's a potential, as I read the memorandum of understanding that we entered into in 2014, that that whereas clause and the suggestion that we won't be responsible for paying back or putting up the match may not be accurate if there's, if there isn't additional documentation that changes what I have seen in some of the earlier documents. So I'm asking for direction to the city manager, just to, to hold off signing the grant application and submitting it until he hears from me.
That sounds fine, Nancy.
I'm concerned. It, I'm concerned, David, because we have been their host agency since 2014. We've gone through this, this is not the first time we've been asked for a grant. This is standard procedure with CHNEP. And to bring this up now, it's like, where have we been? And, and so, you know, I was the representative at the time, the city council, when we brought this on, we went through extensive working with Phil Wickstrom and our city, and David Drury, and all the, Howard's team, to make sure that, you know, the city was well protected. And so, I just have concerns, that you're bringing this up now, and, and it's like, where have you been? So, it bothers me. And I think that, that, I, you know, I understand what you're saying, as an, as a legal advisor, we hire you for this, for that purpose, but to bring this up now, it's just, I, I don't, I have major concerns.
Let me, let me suggest, or explain to you why I have concerns, and even though they weren't raised earlier, I would suggest that the potential liability that we're putting into, that we're putting the city through, if there aren't any documents that change what I'm about to read, I, I would think that you would be more upset with me if I didn't raise it now. So let me, and, and in my capacity as the city attorney, I am not privy to all of the documents that CHNEP signs as, as part of its responsibilities, because they don't pass them to me for my review. So I am looking, and I'm looking at a memorandum of agreement that was signed in 2014. I have had no occasion until just this week to go back and look at that memorandum. As I looked at that memorandum in relationship to this resolution, I'll read to you the paragraph that's in, in this memorandum. And it says, this is paragraph 14 point, I mean, 11.14, and it's under the paragraph, city of Puntagorda responsibilities. And it says, provide or receive a commitment from its partners to provide an acceptable one-to-one match for all section 320 funds received. Cash or in-kind services are eligible as match. CHNEP staff currently administer, administer this requirement with in-kind services from the South Florida Water Management District, and will continue to assist in accomplishing this objective. So, the first sentence I read suggests that the city is responsible for coming up with the match for all section 320 funds received. So this paragraph says, in the resolution, that this grant requires a 100 percent match, which will be, which will be provided by CHNEP and the South Florida Water Management District, and does not require, does not require any contribution, monetary, in-kind, or otherwise, from the city. Well, unless I see some sort of documentation that conflicts with and contradicts what we've agreed to in 2014, I'm a little uncomfortable that you've been told that there will not be any responsibility for, from the city to match, whereas in 2014, we signed an agreement that says that we would. And so, this issue hadn't come up to me before. We've probably only approved these, these annual grants twice, and it's, I just would be uncomfortable if I just kept my mouth shut and followed previous procedure without bringing this to your attention, that there's something here that unless, unless it's been changed, could create a liability for the city. In addition, again, I have not seen any of, any documentation in my responsibility as city attorney that I can recall, that has modified the agreement that we entered into in 2014, where we agreed to the assignment of the contract between the Southwest Florida Water Management District, the Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council, and, and the city of Puntagorda, whereby, wherein that agreement actually terminated on December 31st of 2016. So we may not even be operating under an agreement if this expired and nothing has come subsequent to it. I'm not suggesting that there wasn't something that, that didn't come to extend this agreement. All I'm saying is that these are questions that I have, I wanna make sure that we're not assuming a liability that you may want to assume, but by adopting this resolution, I don't think you were put on a notice that you would be assuming a potential $300,000 or $600,000 of responsibility. And there's more to come, based on the questions I was asked to take a look at by CHNEP.
What's the timeline for this grant?
I don't have any grant information, other than, other than the resolution.
So are you the legal, are you their legal counsel, or do they have?
In the, in the backup to the matter that came before the city council in 2014, it provide, there's a question about, or a provision that says that CHNEP has its own legal counsel. And, and they asked whether they could use the assistance of the city attorney, which then they wouldn't be paying for from time to time, and we said, and the city council said, yes, as long as it didn't create a conflict of interest.
Remember that, or it didn't get absorbeded.
So I have no idea whether they have their own legal counsel. And I didn't, like I said, this is the first time that I can recall receiving a request for advice, and I have no problem giving it. I'm assuming, under this, you know, 2014 council approval, that I'm authorized to do that.
One of the CHNEP staff members is an attorney, so I don't know if that's the legal counsel that they're using. Gary, you're the representative to CHNEP now, so, I don't know if you have a comment.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we can look into it. Remember now, CHNEP pays the city quite a significant administrative fee to cover all of our staff functions that we provide to them. You may be talking about something else.
Well, I understand that, that, that we provide the administrative staff. I don't wanna get into it, I don't think it's appropriate to get into it here without having all of the information. I'm not asking you to rescind the resolution. A very simple matter, like, I'm sure there's a piece of paper somewhere that would answer it, but in that whereas clause that I called to your attention, it says that it would be 100 percent match provided by CHNEP and the South Florida Water Management District. Well, our agreement is with the Southwest Florida Water Management District. I, it may be a typo here, it may be some, something that we're, the responsibility we transferred to the different agency, but I don't wanna make any assumptions without knowing for sure what the situation is.
So maybe we still need to research what your role is with them, and if their, if their grant applications are gonna be in our agenda package, then they need to be completed. The complete grant application and, and all the backup materials should be?
I don't know what you got. My packet didn't include the grant application.
Yeah, that's all we had.
So, and, and look, these are the notes that I made, as questions I have, and that's just the beginning, based on looking at three documents that Mikhail was able to provide for me at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, all we got was the resolution.
Okay, so.
I'm concerned for CHNEP, they're not here to defend this, and, and I think that the director needs to be able to weigh in on this, because this, this is their annual funding.
I get that.
And I don't know when this is due to, to Washington, and so they have to turn this in, and, and if we were to, and I'm just saying, that it's possible that if we grant you the, you know, an extension on this or whatever, that they may miss their deadline, and I don't wanna cause that to occur.
Is Jennifer in the building right now?
Well, my intent was to submit my questions directly to her.
Okay.
Can we go ahead with the procedure and, and the approval, and, and find out what that deadline is before Howard signs the document, and therefore possibly giving you the opportunity to review it before it gets signed.
Yeah, I'm gonna, Mike, I'm gonna give it my highest priority. I'll, I'll give you some.
I think, I think, keep the process moving and get it, you know, get it in place so that we don't miss a time deadline. But let's ensure that we're covered.
And for the future, I think that the agenda package could be more complete for your review.
I would, yes.
So you don't sit here at the meeting and have to review.
Yes, I would appreciate that.
Okay.
So we are signing it today?
You may sign it today.
Okay.
And, and I may have the answers to my questions by the end of the day today.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Yep, anything else?
No.
City clerk.
Just a few boards and committees items under vacancies. We have a three-year term as a building board alternate, and we have an unexpired term as a board of zoning appeals alternate. Under nominations, we have a three-year term on the PGI Canal Advisory Committee. We do have one interested applicant, if you'd like to nominate and appoint, I need a motion.
Before we do that, I have a question. We have the applicant that has put their name in. I don't know if the city clerk's office, and this may just be a technicality, I don't know if the city clerk's office vets these resumes when you get them, but in the case of the person that applied for the Canal Advisory Committee, they did not check the box that says they're willing to fill out a financial disclosure form. And that's not the first time I've seen that, and it is part of the requirements of getting a position on one of these committees.
Yes, we'll follow up with that. We had another one submit that, an application today, where they didn't file, didn't complete that, and we told them the form was incomplete without that answer. So maybe we need to do something with the form to make it a more prominent question, but we will, we will do that.
Maybe we, in this case, maybe we need to nominate but not appoint until that's complete. That would be my recommendation.
Okay.
I would agree with that.
Maybe what we could do too, is include that form, like a, you know, sample, so they can see the form before they say, yes, you know, I want, I'm willing to fill this out, when they really don't even know what that entails. Maybe we should have a sample of that form in the application, just for them to review, in case they feel uncomfortable about that.
Yeah, I mean, it, it is.
Rather than, I'm sorry, rather than, than doing that, because that's not required of all the boards, that's part of our swearing in process. All the members have to be sworn in, and at that time, the deputy clerk requires them to fill out the Form 1, if it's required for theirs, for that particular board. We'll, we'll, we'll do a better job of making sure that question gets answered.
Yes. Or let them know it is available for their review, if they, if they have questions about it, see the clerk to review Form 1, and what your obligations may be.
And that's exactly, that's what we did with the gentleman who came in today. He came in person, developed the application, he didn't, he didn't checkmark one of the boxes. We gave him the form, so he could see what he would be committing to.
Good.
Yeah.
In that case.
So we'll just do nomination for the seat, correct? Is that it?
Yeah, 'cause this wasn't the person you talked to, right?
No, Mr. Neves is not the person that I talked to. This was another gentleman.
I would nominate but reserve the appointment. I would nominate, but reserve the appointment till the next meeting, till we can get that form filled in.
Do we need to vote, or is she just?
No, nominations don't require.
All right.
Okay, and then also under nominations, we have a three-year term on the utility advisory board. We do have one eligible applicant. Mr. Flum is a current member. We would be reappointing him, but we would need a motion to nominate and reappoint.
Nominate and appoint.
Second.
We have a motion as second to nominate and appoint Mr. Flum to the UAB. All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Carrie unanimously.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, I have two things. The first is, I will not be here for the next meeting. I will be on spring break with my family. So Gary, have a good meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be watching on YouTube. And also, I want to wish Mikhail Finkel a very happy maternity leave. And baby Finkel will be here soon, we can't wait. Yes, very exciting. So she'll have to keep us updated on that. And that's all I have. Councilmember comments? We'll go with Nancy.
No comments today. Well, I take that back. The Finkel Ball, community's having a Finkel Ball tournament this weekend. So we hope everything goes well on Reda Esplanade, and that they're successful. I'm continuing to work with them, and we'll have more things to tell you upcoming.
Good.
Nothing right now. And.
They actually have professional matches going on, so.
They do. They do, yes. It's a big tournament. They have like over three, I think it was over 300 people or something like that signed up. So it's, it's quite a big deal. And, and the conquistadors landing is on Saturday. I think it's like noon, noonish, whenever they walk over from Lashley Marina and over to the saunter over. It's kind of, it's a parade, but it's an, it's an experience, so come and join them.
Thank you.
Just one quick comment that I'd like to make. Won't be as lengthy as the water treatment plant. We had a wonderful presentation at the very beginning that involved the saving of life. I would just like to say that my temple received AED first aid training and life support training this last week. It was very much appreciated. And we have 14 people now in our temple that know how to use AEDs to resuscitation and to stabilize a patient until it comes. It's a service that our city offers. Not every community does, by the way. They also offer security, information, and so forth. So I think we're very fortunate to have the public service people that we have that are willing to step out in the community and help them with their individual problems. So I'm just proud to be here.
Thank you.
Nothing further.
Nothing further.
Citizens comments, any topic? Oh, somebody's got to come. After the last, we need a, we need a three-minute.
Ray?
No citizens comments?
I'll just, I'll just go direct to Howard.
Okay. Thank you. We are adjourned. We need a speech. Poke holes in the dam. You gotta poke holes in the dam.